Good evening and welcome to the Carnegie Town Hall. This meeting of the City Planning Commission will begin with a few introductory remarks. The City of Sioux Falls Planning Commission serves as an advisory board to the City Council. It is the responsibility of the Planning Commission to consider and make recommendations on land use and zoning matters. Actions taken tonight on conditional use permits are final unless appealed to the City Council in writing within five days. And any actions taken tonight on final development plans or minor amendments are final. Any recommendations made on preliminary subdivision plan requests tonight will be referred to the City Council for final action at the third council meeting of this month. Any recommendations made on rezone requests, major amendments, future land use amendments, or ordinance amendments tonight will be referred to the City Council for final action at the first council meeting of next month. Council meetings are held at 7:00 PM here in Carnegie Town Hall and are televised. The Planning Commission will first approve the consent agenda and then the regular agenda. In order to place certain non-controversial items on the Commission's consent agenda, planning staff and Planning Commission apply the following criteria. First, the request conforms with SHAPE Sioux Falls 2035 Comprehensive Plan. Second, planning staff recommends approval of the request. Third, there are no audience members present or written comments received in opposition to the request. And fourth, the application meets all conditions and requirements of the Sioux Falls zoning ordinance. Once the consent agenda has been approved, those agenda items have been approved and members of the public are free to leave. For the regular agenda, the following normal public hearing procedure will be followed for each item. By first requesting planning staff to present a brief report on that item, second, the petitioner or representative will be requested to come forward and make a statement or answer questions. After the petitioner has spoken, anyone from the audience who wishes to address the agenda item shall be recognized. Then the Planning Commission will discuss the matter further and take appropriate action. We ask that anybody addressing the Planning Commission move to the podium microphone, identify themselves, and state their address for the record. Please limit your comments to less than five minutes. And as a courtesy to everyone here tonight, we ask that you either turn off or silence your electronic devices. This meeting is being televised on Channel 16 or will be rebroadcast Saturday at 10:00 AM, Tuesday at 7:00 PM, Wednesday at 1:00 AM. Thank you for your cooperation. Thank you and good evening. The first order of business tonight is approval of the consent agenda. The first item is the approval of the October 6, 2010 minutes of the regular meeting. Item two are Platts. Item three, number 2010-09-02 is a rezone from the C3 Central Business District to SubArea E of the Beadle-Greenway Plan Development District to reflect current land uses at 412 East 12th Street. Item four, number 2010-10-5 is a conditional use permit in the C2 General Commercial District to allow motor vehicle sales and display at 3412 South Minnesota Avenue. Item five, number 2010-10-03 is a minor amendment in SubArea D of the Westwood Valley Plan Development District to reduce the required setback, side yard setback, from 10 foot to 5 foot at South Mary Beth Avenue and West 32nd Street. Is there anyone in the audience tonight that would like to move any of the items on the consent agenda to the regular agenda? Seeing none, is there Commission action on the consent agenda?
I'll move for consent, or for approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Pose same sign. The consent agenda has been approved. If you're here tonight for any business on the consent agenda, you're free to leave. I guess we have just one item tonight on the regular agenda, staff report.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. My name is Steve Randall. I'll be representing planning staff on this item this evening. This is the Minnesota Avenue Quarter Redevelopment Study that was started back in June and involved a number of members of the community as stakeholders in reviewing the status of Minnesota Avenue and how it can be included in SHAPE Sioux Falls 2035 Comprehensive Plan for development, redevelopment, and improvement. Members of that stakeholder group, I'd like to recognize at this time, I guess there aren't, or there is, a representative of the group here this evening. And I'll just go down the list and identify those people. Pam Breidenbach was the representative from the Planning Commission. Is out here, okay. And is going to give the second part of the presentation this evening, the recommendations of the study group. Others who were willing to meet and to discuss and to offer comments included Anita Wetch, former Planning Commissioner from Canfield Business Interiors, Kurt Brosz from Sanford Health Research Development, Shawna Goldammer, represented zoning staff on the group, Sean Irvin from TSP, representing the Board of Historic Preservation, as well as Dixie Heeb from Davenport Evans, also representing the Board of Historic Preservation. Raquel Blount is here this evening from Lloyd Companies, Oscar DeVries from the Insurance Connection, Bruce Idy, Vern Idy Motor Cars, Todd Olson, Get 'n Go, Craig Hagan, NII, Sioux Falls Commercial Real Estate, Sam Assam, Assam Commercial Real Estate, and Whitney Parks, Coke Hazard Architects. So it was quite a group that worked on this and is presenting information that's contained in your staff report that you received. What you received was a summary of discussion items, comments, and staff response as we went through a series of meetings, six meetings total, and came to a conclusion with recommendations that will be presented this evening. As a background, the 2009 Major Street Plan indicated Minnesota Avenue to be classified as a north-south principal arterial street. It's also a multimodal corridor in the 2035 Comprehensive Plan. And I know that you're pretty well acquainted with SHAPE Sioux Falls 2035 Plan and the terminology. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer those, but I'll go through this report using some of those terms. Historically, Minnesota Avenue, of course, was a tree-lined boulevard, kind of historic homes type of street. And then as it historically changed in character, became a kind of a transportation corridor going from the airport and south and serving some of the institutions here in town, the hospital campuses, college campuses, and the downtown. More recently, parking has been taken off of the street, most of it anyway, and redevelopment activity is happening kind of at different spots along the street. What we would like to do is look at how this could be best redeveloped in the future or offer opportunities for development in the future in conformance with SHAPE Sioux Falls. A study group was put together. Stakeholders were asked to participate in a comprehensive study of real estate development and market potential along Minnesota. The purpose and intent of the stakeholder meetings was to determine the public necessity to advocate for amendments to the existing zoning ordinance. Then the objective would be to complete a study process and have stakeholders advocate to the City Council for changing existing ordinances or to retain them as they currently I have a brief slide presentation that goes over kind of the general character of the corridor as the study group reviewed it at each of its meetings and discussed SHAPE Sioux Falls policies and standards that might be used in situations along the corridor to assist in development and to guide development as we would like to see it in the Comprehensive First slide indicates that the land use and development policies of Chapter 5 SHAPE Places in the 2035 Plan as adopted by the city suggest Minnesota Avenue is having the potential for multimodal access in the development of lively, secure, and distinctive places. To that end, the 2035 Plan provides government officials, property owners, and developers along the corridor with policies and standards for the streetscape, signage, access, open space, parking, transitions, and mixed use. Being an important transportation corridor in the community, we don't want to forget that. I mean, the main purpose of it, principal purpose of the corridor is to move traffic. And so Minnesota Avenue can and should be improved to SHAPE Sioux Falls standards so that it will also provide and enhance, reinforce adjacent development. Further, it should become a place that relates to the needs of adjacent neighborhoods for transportation as well. Becomes kind of a collector for those neighborhoods and provides opportunity in the future for employment, community services, and shopping. Currently, looking back over the land use and within a quarter mile of Minnesota Avenue, up to a half mile of Minnesota Avenue, there are a total of 10,000 housing units. Now, this is going from Russell Avenue south to I-229. It's about a three-and-a-half mile stretch. 10,000 housing units. 4,000 or 4,600 housing units are within a quarter mile. That's walking distance of that corridor. If, say, for example, you were to put an employment center, a neighborhood employment center is defined by the Comprehensive Plan, at 14th Street in Minnesota, it would be within the walking distance of 738 housing units and within a half mile walking or biking distance of 2,700 housing units. So it begins to show that the Comprehensive Plan goals and objectives to provide these kinds of employment centers throughout the community on arterial streets has a great deal of potential at certain locations. SHAPE Sioux Falls identifies three corridor development patterns along Minnesota Avenue: streetcar commercial, urban core, and suburban arterial strip. These are defined in your Comprehensive Plan, and I have included descriptions of those on the screen here this evening and also in your report packet. Corridor overlay districts are encouraged by the Plan to develop along these areas for using toolkits for mixed use and appropriate conventional redevelopment within each pattern. Some of those are graphically identified. The visual survey in the 2035 Comprehensive Plan indicates some of those general characteristics of each type of development. Characteristics of existing development along the corridor indicate that not all sections of Minnesota Avenue are the same. And I think we see that as you drive from one end to the other, you begin to notice what those characteristics are. And so I have a presentation this evening of what those are, and we would like to address those in further study as part of our recommendations. At the north end, from West Russell to West Second, it's primarily residential in character with some commercial infill. There is a midtown section from West Second to West Fourteenth, and that has commercial zoning next to the Cathedral Historic District and the Pettigrew Neighborhood Redevelopment District. And this section also borders the Minnetonka County Government Campus, the Central Business District, and the Downtown Historic District. So that's quite a mixed bag of general neighborhood characteristics. What could be called a campus district from West Fourteenth to West Thirty-third is again bordered by small highway commercial businesses only a block away from solid residential neighborhoods and several historic districts: All Saints, Sherman, Hayes, and McKennan. The University of Sioux Falls and Augustana College campuses, along with several churches and city schools, are within walking distance. And Sanford Hospital, the USD Medical Center, and McKennan Park are also located within walking or biking distance. The south end, from West Thirty-third to West Forty-first and I-229, takes on the character of a business entrance into the community. With zoning for larger commercial lots and buildings, there are still substantial residential neighborhoods within walking distance of Forty-first Street. Potential neighborhood or corridor development is identified in an initial survey of development potential. We spent fair amount of time in the study group looking at those potentials where adequate access and parking can be provided and suitable transitions into existing neighborhoods can be made. Commercial infill lots will continue to be in demand along this corridor, and you can see that happening as new restaurants and stores and businesses are locating along there today. In the future, we would like to expand that potential to include the types of development identified in the Comprehensive Plan. Outdated or underutilized facilities are adapted or remodeled for new uses or cleared and redeveloped to meet planning and design expectations of the current real estate market. SHAPE Sioux Falls suggests that there's even greater development potential for distinctive places. We've looked at those, and they are identified in your report as employment centers, streetcar commercial, vertical mixed use, and gateways. Looking at the definition of each one of these sections, I'll just briefly identify them. On the north end, we go from West Russell Street to West Second Street. Potential design review items are identified as a gateway to the airport, very important part of the corridor, we think. Russell Avenue design standards come into play there. Limited land uses, mixed use, multifamily to a half-block or a full-block on both sides of this stretch would be possible, and we would support those types of uses in a redevelopment pattern. Neighborhood employment center is possible at Brookings Street, and it's already begun there. We would look at front yard setbacks, signage type and location. As we move down to a midtown district between West Second and West Eighth, another gateway, this one to the downtown, but also to the Cathedral and Courthouse Historic Districts at Sixth Street, where public improvements and a transit stop would certainly be beneficial. Now we're looking at downtown design review standards, mixed use potential, a half-block to full-block on the west side, and neighborhood bicycle and pedestrian connections that would be very important at that stretch. Another section of midtown would be from West Eighth to West Fourteenth. Another gateway to the downtown at Eighth Street and to the Pettigrew Neighborhood, and also to the Cathedral and Downtown Historic Districts at Tenth, Eleventh, and Fourteenth. We would be looking for public improvements, transit stops, downtown design review standards, mixed use potential to a full-block on the west side, and neighborhood employment center at Fourteenth Street. Of course, we drive by the old gigglebees every day, I think. Look at that and wonder, how could that be used? What could we use that for? Well, we'd like to entertain an employment, neighborhood employment center at that location. Campus district from Fourteenth Street to West Twenty-second, another gateway to Sanford Hospital and the All Saints and Sherman Historic Districts at Eighteenth Street. This section is identified in the 2035 Plan as streetcar commercial. Streetcar commercial being an orientation of businesses and stores and buildings to the street rather than back on the lot so that you have this parking between the building and the street. In the 2035 Plan, you look at some examples in there, and it looks like exciting possibilities to reestablish that streetcar commercial that becomes more accessible to pedestrians and people riding mass transit. A neighborhood employment center could also be looked at at Fourteenth and Eighteenth Street intersections. Campus district from West Twenty-second to West Thirty-third, another gateway to University of Sioux Falls and Augustana campuses and to the Hayes and McKennan Historic Districts at Twenty-Sixth Street. Here, we would probably be looking more again at mixed uses and commercial, a half-block to full-block on the east side and one to two blocks on the west side, just because of the institutional demand or future institutional demand of those campuses going out to Minnesota Avenue. Lot of opportunity there, we think. Neighborhood employment center at Twenty-Sixth Street for mixed use potential. In the south end, from West Thirty-third to West Forty-first, we would actually look at a subregional employment center, Thirty-third Street to Forty-ninth Street. Subregional, of course, is a little bigger commercial type of opportunity for development and redevelopment than would be a neighborhood employment center. Subregional begins to draw people from outside the community. Mixed use potential at Thirty-third, Thirty-seventh, and Forty-first Street, Collectors. South end from West Forty-first to I-229, community gateway to Sioux Falls. One end, we've got a gateway to the airport, from the airport to Sioux Falls, then we have a gateway at I-229 into Sioux Falls. Would offer the opportunity for, again, to reinforce a subregional employment center possible and a residential transition into those neighborhoods that are joining. We have some appendix material that's included in the report, and it was discussed at the different study group meetings. First one is to identify improvements to Minnesota Avenue that would be consistent from one end to the other. That was one of the key things the study group wanted to make sure that got done and finally, in conclusion, that everybody along the street knew what to expect in terms of right-of-way, street improvements, landscaping, and so on. There's an intersection layout offered, and these are being reviewed currently by the City Engineering Department because they are going to be entering into a redesign of Minnesota Avenue this fall. And a lot of these things, we hope, will be taken into consideration. Collector Street intersections become very important for establishing a place in the corridor. Appendix B would be graphic standards for commercial infill. There is an example here that shows how by following SHAPE Sioux Falls standards, you can actually increase the potential building size, given the same size lot, same amount of parking, and a little flexibility in the parking standards and landscaping standards. We're willing to, as a city, work with developers and landowners and businesses who want to take advantage of some of those flexibilities that are promoted in the Comprehensive Plan. Another example is for a half-block commercial redevelopment next to an alley as a transition into a residential neighborhood, including landscaping, identifying the potential for parking, building size, and open space. These are general graphic standards offered or suggested by the Comprehensive Plan that, you know, developers and new businesses need to be aware of as far as opportunities for new development. The next graphic then actually becomes something to visualize. One of the things the study group wanted to do was to visualize what those improvements might look like. And then finally, we would also make available film clips. As these studies progress, they can actually be put into a film strip, a film clip, and made available to property owners and developers along Minnesota Avenue. Again, graphic standards assisting in visualizing development potential and characteristics within each one of these sections. That pretty much summarizes the group's efforts and discussions, comments, and staff support to this point. We begin to put that in, formulate that into recommendations to present to you this evening, and Pam Breidenbach would like to do that at this time.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Pam Breidenbach, and my address is 101 North Main, Sioux Falls, South Dakota. I will be brief. One of the things I would just like to mention before I get started is the, first of all, Steve did a great job with these graphics. I think they're just, they are so, I don't know, they just kind of put you in the space, and I think that's really exciting. The other thing that I would really like to, and Steve and I have talked about this, and actually, we talked about it in one of our meetings, is I would really like to see a defined, welcome area, maybe whether it be sign, rockwork, whatever, with some landscaping, at each end of Minnesota Avenue, simply because as you're coming down Minnesota Avenue from the airport and you get to that intersection, it really is kind of the gateway to the city. And I would really like to see us come up with something that would define that area. And as well, on the other end of Minnesota Avenue, as people come off the interstate and they're about to enter the business section of Minnesota Avenue, excuse me, I think it would be, I think it would be very attractive and inviting, and I just, I think that I'd really like to see them seriously consider that. The 2035 SHAPE Sioux Falls Comprehensive Plan describes Minnesota Avenue between Russell Avenue on the north end and I-229 on the south end as a multimodal transportation corridor. It is intended to serve community transportation needs for private and commercial vehicles, Sioux Falls area metro, transit buses, and bicycles and pedestrians altogether. The corridor also serves to collect similar types of traffic from adjacent neighborhoods to other parts of the community, and it will serve, and it will continue to serve as a customer destination for commercial, office, and institutional uses as a source of employment. Along with public street and utility improvements, the corridor has a potential for new real estate development. Generally, demand is for development or redevelopment of commercial properties along Minnesota Avenue. Sometimes the demand is greater than the supply of available property, which may result in requests to rezone adjacent residential properties in order to accommodate a bigger project. Sometimes a proposed commercial rezoning might result in a land use conflict in the neighborhood unless there is further consideration for project design and buffers. And sometimes a bigger project could have been accommodated on a smaller parcel if conventional zoning requirements for setbacks, parking, landscaping, and signage had not been as restrictive. The SHAPE Sioux Falls 2035 Comprehensive Plan adopted by the City of Sioux Falls includes policies and guidelines for future planning and design. Chapter 5 SHAPE Places presents land use and development policies for mixed land uses, transitions, parking, open space, streetscape, signage, and multimodal access. The intent of these policy statements is to help update development and redevelopment policies, including methods that create lively, secure, and distinctive places throughout the community. Minnesota Avenue Corridor stakeholders have met as a study group to discuss the street design and purpose, private development objectives in the real estate marketplace, and property development potentials along the corridor. Discussions have considered how new developments might conform to SHAPE Sioux Falls policies and guidelines. As of this date, it remains to visualize planning and design potential along the corridor and to prepare supplemental development criteria for each section. The study group recommends that the City adopt a future Minnesota Avenue corridor plan for public improvements and real estate development as follows. Number one, establish Minnesota Avenue right-of-way and public improvements consistent with SHAPE Corridor. A, prepare a streetscape elements manual to ensure consistent and attractive features. B, provide consistent public right-of-way width and street design for each section, including four lanes of through traffic with left and right turning lanes provided at Collector Street intersections. By the way, that particular item was discussed at length. It seems to be a request for a lot of people. Bus turnout lanes at mid-block locations for defined transit routes. Public sidewalks on both sides of the street, including boulevards, to separate them from the street curb. Streetscaping appropriate to neighborhood character and walkability. Pedestrian and bicycle connections to adjacent neighborhoods. Number two, establish corridor boundaries for sections of Minnesota Avenue of distinct character. A, prepare corridor maps to show section boundaries, zoning, land use, transitions, and development opportunities. B, provide vision statements and graphic examples of real estate development opportunity within each section, including land use, size, capacity, and general character of development. Number three, prepare section planning and design guidelines based on the policies of SHAPE Places, including A, land use and transitions, B, building and open space, C, parking and access, D, setbacks and landscaping, E, signage and lighting, F, neighborhood connections, G, community gateway improvement plans. Number four, identify public and private incentives for development projects that follow section planning and design guidelines. A, flexible density, setback, parking, landscaping, and signage requirements. B, administrative approval process for qualifying projects. C- approval process for qualifying projects; C, tax increment financing; D, public contributions for open space and street improvements; E, neighborhood tax incentive, area-based, includes Minnesota Avenue; F, downtown tax incentive, area-based, includes Minnesota Avenue; and G, industrial tax incentive, structure, land use base; H, others may become available. The study group further recommends that the city conduct corridor section open house sessions to obtain public support for the plan. Thank you for your time. Do you have any questions?
Any questions for Pam?
No questions, but I think some of the suggestions really look great, you know, like the bus turnouts, sidewalks with landscaping to protect everybody from the traffic. I know some of those suggestions look wonderful.
This was really a fun committee to be on, because it was, it kind of turned into more of a creative brainstorming session. I mean, it was, I mean, there were the practical sites, too, but I could just, I can really envision a lot of these things, and I think Minnesota Avenue desperately needs to have some updating.
That was interesting to read through the comments, too, and the discussion that you had, and the follow-up that was done. That was helpful to read through all that, so it's like a great job.
Thanks.
Any other questions for Pam?
For one that drove north down Minnesota Avenue to get to the meeting tonight, I agree, and I have a checkmark by the idea of the consistent public right-of-way of width and street design all the way through Minnesota would be fantastic. The consistency and usability would improve tremendously. I appreciate your work on this. It's good stuff.
Thank you. Thank you. It was really, it was really interesting. So now I'm going to sit down before Kenny has a question.
Oh, no, hold on, hold on.
Well, I noticed he said in his email that it could be a long night, that he was going to have some questions. Thank you.
Okay. Raquel, did you want to come up and say anything or add anything? Thanks for your time spent as part of the study group.
I'd just like to thank Steve. I mean, he did a phenomenal job. I would like to thank him for asking.
Thank you. Steve, could you come to the podium for a second? I guess the question I would have would relate to what the next steps are. I saw mentioned in the report some open houses in some of the neighborhoods, but beyond that, is this headed towards a design overlay, or how do you, how do you get this to become something that actually becomes implemented?
I think the committee correctly defined that we needed neighborhood support of the plan before we could go much further, and so that would probably be the next step, is to have a series of open houses and so on. As to whether it gets to the status of an ordinance, or an ordinance revision, or amendment, or anything like that, that hasn't really been determined yet. There's several studies that are underway right now. Dave presented his landscape study, ordinance study, and there's a parking study currently underway, and maybe Jeff wants to summarize what the status of all of those might be here in the near future.
We'd love to have Jeff tell us about those studies.
Jeff Schmidt, representing planning staff. On the city's website, sioufals.org, if you go to the zoning section, there's zoning amendments. Also, if you just went to Shapewell Falls, which we adopted last year, it talks about that your zoning ordinance should be consistent with your comprehensive plan. And since Shapewell Falls is our comprehensive plan, we are now, as Steve mentioned, reviewing all of our zoning ordinances to see if there is consistency. What it really comes down to is we need stakeholders, we need citizens' involvement initially to see if they're supportive of the existing zoning ordinance, if there should be changes to these sections, and then that follow-through the state. Is there enough need to move forward to planning commission and to city council and say, these things need to be changed? So on that webpage, there's sections about, you know, the parking, the Minnesota Avenue, the landscaping, the signage section, and hopefully, there's enough momentum for any of these to say, yes, there's some changes that need to be recommended, to be moved forward. And then there's going to be more and more, again, as the citizens continue to talk to us and say, we would like you also to look at lighting, fencing, housing standards, lot sizes, whatever there is out there, again, to meet today's economy, today's market. Things have changed since our zoning ordinance was significantly updated back in 1982, so we're trying to get all that out there. The timeframe is usually the question people ask, is, well, when is this going to be done? It will be done soon as we have enough support from the public to get it corrected. It's not staff-directed or staff-initiated. We're looking for citizen support.
Thank you, Jeff. Any questions for Jeff?
Thank you.
I guess not. Rob, you're the only one left tonight. Any questions or comments regarding item number six? Okay, any further discussion on the part of the commission related to item number six? If not, are you looking for just acceptance? Okay. Is there anybody that would be willing to make the motion that we accept the report for the Minnesota Avenue study?
Mr. Chair, I move that we accept the report as presented by the preceding presenters.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing non-allers in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed, same sign. I believe the only item of business left tonight is adjournment. Is there a motion to adjourn? Is there a second? We are adjourned.
This is an ambitious study.
Yeah, it is. I'm surprised that we're staying on. It's a schedule.
You know, I am old enough to know that the boulevard is right down the middle.